To the May tenth meeting of the Stafford County Planning Commission. If you will please stand for the invocation by Ms. Vanuch and the pledge allegiance by myself.
Dear Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business for the community. Please guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being a source of our guidance to see us all through. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united up, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Vanuch. All right, if you will call the roll, Ms. Vanuch.
Absolutely. Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Vanuch is here. Mr. Appicella?
Chair, Mr. Chairman, please see six of seven are here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. And Ms. Bailey let me know that she was unable to attend this evening, and so we will miss her very much. All right, next item is the declarations of disqualifications. Are there any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rhodes.
For item number five, I briefly was discussing some business with the applicant that's on that property, and while I'm not conducting any business with them, I think since that was a recent discussion, I will recuse myself from any action on that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. And that is consistent with when this came before us before. So, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Any others? All right, seeing none, we now go to the public comment period of our meeting. At this point, if you wish to comment on any item other than the items that are here for public hearings, so if you wish to speak on items one, two, three, or four, there will be a time later on to speak on those. This is just in general on other topics. We ask that you talk to the commission as a whole, not to individual members. You have three minutes. Once you come up, please state your name and address. Then when you are speaking, the green light is on. When you see the yellow light, it means you have one minute left. And then at the red light, we wish that you wrap up your comments. And again, these are for comments that are not related to any of the public hearings this evening. So is there anyone that wishes to talk about any topic other than the public hearings? Yes, sir?
I would.
Okay. And it's not on any of the public hearing. Okay. All right.
Yes, my name is Gregory Gavin, 242 Stony Hill Road. I live out in Hartwood at Lake Curtis. I would like to introduce the subject of gun control. I was, don't know if anyone is aware, but there's some flaws in our gun ordinances. I don't think they've been addressed in a long time. Maybe you could tell me, does anyone know if anyone's addressed the gun ordinances in our county in the last five years?
Yeah, we don't, we can't respond, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I was wondering if I could introduce legislation, I don't know how to do it, that would restrict discharge of firearms within 100 yards of a public road. The way the law is written now in 26 dot three is you are allowed to, you're not allowed to hunt from a public road within 100 yards, but you're allowed to discharge firearms. It seemed kind of bizarre to me. I did have a problem with my neighbor discharging firearms from their front porch. To prevent them from doing this, I had to rely on another part of the law which restricts discharging firearms within 100 yards of an occupied dwelling. It's very uncomfortable to me to pull out my measuring tape while my neighbor was having a fire arms party. I wanted to know how one proceeds with getting the law changed.
Thank you, sir. And I'm sure staff can help you with which department to talk about that at a future time. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on a topic? Good evening, Ms. Calendar.
Hi, Elaine Calendar, 622 Lancaster Street in Falmouth District. And I noticed you have item five on your unfinished business regarding Stafford Nursing Home and Retirement Community. I wanted to remind you of some of the excellent comments brought to you by citizens at the public hearing regarding the height of buildings, the serious issue of transporting folks who may need to go to the hospital along windy or congested roads. This location is quite a distance from the hospital. And I thought there was an excellent point made by a gentleman about isolating seniors in places where, in remote places, this is something of a remote place. It's good for seniors to be able to get out and walk, even walk to shops or community centers and so forth. So when we're planning this kind of facility, it's good to keep in mind the total community, plan a total community, not just isolate people in a remote place. So I just want to remind you of those points that were brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calendar. Anyone else wishing to speak on any item in general? Seeing none. All right, we come to our general meeting. Ms. Vanuch?
I'd like to make a motion to move item number four, the amendment to the zoning ordinance on outdoor lighting standards, and reorganize that to item number one.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the agenda by shifting item number four to the beginning of the public hearings. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. English. Any comment, Ms. Vanuch?
The only comment I'll make is that Mr. Gavin was here last time, and I think he had mentioned it was uncomfortable for him to sit for quite a long time due to an injury. So we're just trying to accommodate you and move this up so you can speak earlier, and then we'll do a recess, and then once it gets dark enough, we'll go out and view the outdoor lighting.
Okay. Mr. English? Anyone else?
That's all.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion to amend the agenda, so if anyone will either vote or, Ms. Clinton, can I just ask for unanimous consent? All right, we have unanimous consent on that?
Yep.
I see it. So, all right, so we are adjusting the agenda, so that item four, which is the amendment to the zoning ordinance for lighting, is now at the top of the agenda. Mr. Harvey, we are now in public hearing mode.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, this was a public hearing in our last meeting, and Ms. Blackburn led the staff presentation regarding the proposed changes. Would you like the staff to summarize those changes or open it up for public comment at this point in time?
I think it'd be fair for her to summarize the changes, then we'll go on to the public hearing and public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please recognize Ms. Blackburn for a summary of the ordinance amendment.
Good evening, Ms. Blackburn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members. This is a text amendment for proposed ordinance 017-13, and it is to provide a measurable lighting level at the property line of a residential use property. It also is to reduce the amount that a security light can be activated from 15 minutes to seven minutes. And at the last meeting, we had some comments from Mr. Gavin, and we did not have our SEPTED officer, who is here this evening, Officer Hamilton, to be the expert to discuss this and give you some insight into the world of SEPTED and light levels. And so at this meeting, it was postponed so we could do that. And do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Blackburn? Seeing none? All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, now we will go to, we continue the public hearing, so now we will go to the public hearing. Again, you have three minutes to speak. When you come up, please state your name and address, address the commission as a whole. And remind you that it's not a dialogue. You speak, we listen to what you have to say, and then when it hits a yellow light, that means you have one minute left, and when the red light blinks, then it's time to wrap up your comments. And so, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Come on up, sir.
Gregory D. Gavin, 242 Stony Hill Road. I live out in Hartwood. The definition of light trespass is when light spills over property lines through an adjacent property. For excessive illumination, the zoning administrator has set this limit at .5 lumens. Illumination above this value extending onto the adjacent properties would be a violation of county code. I provided a copy of that in front of you. Mr. Dayton wrote it to me February ninth, 2015. If I could point out the operative points here as that .5 lumens. Somehow, we have a resolution in front of us that is .5 foot candles, which represents a tenfold increase. I'm here to point that out to you. I don't think anything has changed in safety or laws in the last two years. What would validate a tenfold increase in the light allowance? Another problem I have with the law is in the exemption, the words aimed at and pointed at were vetted in previous meetings in which Ms. Blackburn was not present. The words were and still are decidedly problematic as they are subjective and argumentative. They fit no legal description. That opinion came, I believe, from Mr. Harvey and from the county attorney. He basically said that the law that we have with those words was ineffective, that there's nothing he can do. He cannot go to a judge and order a neighbor, anybody, to do anything. I'm here to solve that problem. The exemption, which I'm here to speak against, my third point, provides, I'm against the exemption. Please don't have any exemption. It provides a common loophole for abuse as the lights from my neighbors went on and off sequentially all night long. What is to prevent this scene from repeating itself? Seven minutes that you decided that it can come on? That just seems arbitrary to me. I don't know whether someone looked at the 15-minute rule and knew that I was against that and decided to go down to seven. I'm against the seven. Basically, the lights just come on all night long. My neighbor told me there's nothing I could do about it. The lights were shining on the second floor of my bedroom window, inside my bedroom window. I pulled out the light meter to do the reading. It was eight times the legal limit. I proposed that back to Mr. Harvey at the time, and I said, how does allowing my neighbor to shine his lights at eight times the legal limit provide any public safety at all? His answer was, it doesn't at all. That the light should be restricted at the border, the property border. It's argumentative. It causes a gray area that happens in the middle of nights, very, very destructive between neighbors. These are points that Mr. Harvey has agreed with me. Somehow, this was not conveyed in this resolution. I'm shocked. I tell you, to be honest with you, and this is uncomfortable to say, to tell everyone, oh, you got it wrong. Maybe this is how politics goes. Someone stands up and points out, oh, you got the number wrong. And that's what I'm doing.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Ms. Calendar.
Elaine Calendar, 622 Lancaster Street. I wasn't, after Gavin, to look, be looked at further and find a better resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calendar. All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to table this and go out and look at an outdoor lighting in a little bit.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Why don't we wait until he has to deal with all that? All right, so we have a motion to table this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Ms. Vanuch, seconded by Mr. English. Is there any comment, Ms. Vanuch?
No further comments.
Mr. English?
No.
Anyone else? All right. Is there unanimous consent to table the item? All right, seeing no objections, we will table this. And, Mr. Harvey, now we go back to item, what was number one, the Cool Springs Storage?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you please recognize Brian Gooch for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Gooch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Brian Gooch here with the Planning and Zoning Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting the Cool Springs Storage Reclassification Request. Again, this is a request for reclassification specifically for the development of a mini storage facility as proposed. The existing zoning district is A1 agricultural. The proposed zoning district is M1 light industrial. This is on Assessor's Parcel 54E 219A, consisting of 2.65 acres. The applicant is Johnson Commercial Real Estate Incorporated. Here's an aerial view of the site. The site's located on the east side of Cool Springs Road, about halfway down across from Cool Springs Road Industrial Complex. This is a wooded site. There's a CSX rail line along the eastern property line known as the Dogren Spur. This is spur line. Site surrounded by various M1-zoned light industrial uses, including the industrial complex to the west across from Cool Springs Road, warehousing to the east across from the CSX spur line, equipment sales and service businesses to the north and south. There's also former residence along the southern property line, which is now being used as a contractor's office. And the parcel immediately adjacent to the subject parcel on the western side has an existing cell tower and existing equipment storage yard. Let's see if I can generally outline that storage yard here. This parcel is also owned by the applicant, and I'll refer to this simply as the cell tower parcel throughout the presentation, just for simplicity. A portion of the southern property line is also shared with the adjacent church, and that's this piece here. The subject parcel is relatively level, but the elevation is about six to eight feet higher than the adjacent cell tower parcel, with slopes that generally follow the western Here's a view looking east from Cool Springs Road. You'll see in the foreground, there's a fenced area, that's the equipment storage yard that's located on the cell tower parcel. The cell tower parcel's here in center, and the subject rezoning parcel is the wooded piece in the background. Also note that there is an existing continuous right turn lane. There's an existing entrance from Cool Springs Road, and there's also, not in picture, but for southbound traffic, there's an existing left turn lane and median break that serves the site. Here's the site in relation to the comprehensive plan, land use plan. You'll see the area in blue. This is all land use designated for business and industry, and that's really follows the whole Cool Springs Road corridor. This is actually the last remaining A1 zone parcel along Cool Springs Road. Here's the generalized development plan, and it depicts, well, first of all, you'll just see the subject parcel here shown in red. The GDP is depicting development across both the subject parcel and the adjacent cell tower parcel. The applicant's intent is to combine those and use them both for the mini storage facility. A single point of access is proposed to Cool Springs Road, and this is in line with the existing access point that you saw earlier in the picture. A total of about 77,000 square foot of storage buildings is proposed with a 900 square foot office in the front. That's located here. About 53,000 square foot of buildings is shown within the subject rezoning parcel. Two internal drive aisles are proposed, which provide access to the subject parcel, and those points are here and here. And this was an approach to try to utilize the existing topography, because with the cell tower being there, it really limits the ability to do any masquerading on the site. There's also fencing proposed around the mini storage facility with two gates at the entrance, one here and one here. There's also landscaping shown along Cool Springs Road and a transitional buffer where the property abuts the adjacent church. The applicant has not proffered that the development will be in conformance with the GDP, so the layout here is subject to change, and the property could also potentially be developed for other byright uses in the M1 zoning district. There's no proffer stating that it has to be a mini storage or warehousing type facility. The proposed proffers state that access to the subject parcel will be through the adjacent cell tower parcel, and no new access points will be created on Cool Springs Road. Also, the existing equipment storage yard and associated fencing will be removed in conjunction with first phase of development. The subject parcel and cell tower parcel will be consolidated as well, and the combined use or uses established on the subject parcel will not result in a generation of more than 500 vehicle trips per day, which really, it places controls on the intensity of development that can occur here. As for staff findings, the positives are the proposed M1 zoning district classification is consistent with the land use recommendations. The proposal is also consistent with the established development patterns in the vicinity, and the proffers will help mitigate impacts on the transportation network. No negatives are noted. Finally, staff recommends approval pursuant to proposed ordinance 017-23 with the proposed proffers. And we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Any questions for Mr. Gooch? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. All right, we will now open up the public hearing for this item. As with the last item, individuals can come down. They have three minutes to talk about this item. When they come forward, give.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Please recall, we need to have the applicant give their presentation.
Oh, okay, sorry. Applicant, go right ahead. Thank you, Mr. English.
What do I need to do, Jeff?
Just say anything that you want to in favor of your proposal.
My name's Bill Johnson, reside at 29 Ivy Creek Lane, Stafford County, Virginia. Been a resident about 25 years. My family's been in the Frexburg area since the 1800s. My father formed the Frexburg Board of Realtors in 1954. I'm not new to the area. Purchased the first parcel where the cell tower is about a year or so ago. The owners of the other parcel approached me about buying the one that I'm trying to have rezoned, which I did, and met with staff. Everything seemed fairly positive. Everything around it's zoned M1. One thing that hasn't been brought to light is there's a deed restriction on this property. And I'll just read it from 2007, when the church initially bought this, then Dickie Sisson bought it, and I bought it from him. But, "granted by acceptance of this deed hereby covenant that its successors, heirs, legal representatives, or persons shall not use a premises for any purpose other than industrial or commercial purposes, and the premises will not be used for any residential purpose of any kind nature." Anyway, so I can't use it residentially. It's obvious, at least to me, that somehow this just got missed and wasn't rezoned. I approached the county to ask them to rezone it, but they wouldn't do it. So then I said, well, do I need a GDP? They said, yes. I said, that's why I'm submitting a GDP. I haven't fully vetted this particular use. That's why I didn't want to proffer it at this time. So, but, you know, my neighbor to the left can use it for M1 uses. My neighbors to the right can use it for M1 uses. And across the street can use it for M1 uses under the current code. So I don't see philosophically what difference it would make to use this for M1 uses. So that's my spiel, and I appreciate your time. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Go ahead, Mr. English.
So you say that the storage thing may not work. You're not going to do that then?
Well, what I said is I haven't vetted it in fullness in terms of, you know, I still need to get a market study to see that this particular site will support what I have projected here.
And if not, then do you have anything that you have else in mind?
No. I would try to find it, you know, I'm an entrepreneur. I'll try to find out what demand is there.
Right.
And create the use to the demand.
Okay.
And, Ms. Johnson, with the cell tower smack dab in the middle, it sort of will prohibit you from doing a good number of things.
Correct. As my engineer, you know, we've got about a seven or eight-foot grade between the cell tower site and this particular site that wraps around it. So it makes it very difficult to do anything, you know, of a big nature or a larger facility. Say, say 100,000 square foot warehouse, you couldn't get it on here. It wouldn't work.
Right. And I was looking at the different M1 things.
Correct.
Many of them, on that type of parcel, just with a cell tower smack dab in the middle, it would be a little difficult to do.
And I think it is a positive that eliminating another access point on Cool Springs Road now, and this is the access that was created when they added the additional lanes, and I guess the highway department built it. So, feel good.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. English. So again, if you wish to comment on this item, come forward. You have three minutes. State your name and your address. When you start talking, the green light comes on. When you see the yellow light, that means you have one minute or less, depending on when you looked at it. And then when you see the red light, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we close the public hearing. And does staff have anything else they would like to add, which is our normal thing?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. And I'm assuming since the applicant just spoke, you don't have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vanuch, I'm passing the gavel to you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Cohen, since this is residing in the George Washington Election District, what is your desire to move forward?
Yes, I would move for approval of ordinance 017-23.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. English, for the second. Mr. Cohen, any further comments?
Just several things. One, I think the applicant has gone and done some due diligence on this project. Quite honestly, if it's the last parcel that's A1 and everything else has changed, it just makes sense to make it like everything around it. As I've said, the cell tower being in the middle limits the other possible uses that are there. I appreciate, I had raised, because of another item on this road, the question about a fence. And while the applicant is not proffering a fence, I think his view about a fence was pretty much the same way I was thinking on the fence, of making it look appropriate for the area. And then his information about the deed sort of makes it sensible. So for all these reasons, I strongly move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. English, do you have any further comments?
No.
Anyone else on the commission, any other further comments? Okay, seeing no further comments, we shall take a vote to approve the reclassification of Cool Springs Storage. Okay, the motion passes 6-0 with Ms. Bailey being absent.
Thank you, Ms. Vanuch, and good luck to you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you for your time.
All right, so, Mr. Harvey, we move on to item number two on our agenda, which is now theoretically number three, but to those who have gotten the agenda, it would be item number two.
Mr. Chairman, staff would request the commission's indulgence to combine both items two and three on the agenda for a combined presentation. Item two is a comprehensive plan amendment. Item three is an ordinance amendment pertaining to the same subject, transfer of development rights. If that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
I think that's certainly acceptable. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Go ahead, Mr. Zaroff.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Mike Zaroff, the Planning and Zoning Department. And if I could have the computer, please. So this is a presentation on items two and three on transfer of development rights regarding amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. So the specific requests, first, there would be a proposed amendment to chapter 3.8 of the comprehensive plan, text and map amendments to expand the transfer of development rights receiving area, and then amendments to county code section 28-358, receiving properties to modify the TDR ordinance by deleting the requirement that property be designated as part of a redevelopment area to qualify as a receiving property. So first looking at the comprehensive plan. So first, looking at the comprehensive plan amendment, the proposed map expands the receiving area on the east side of Jefferson-Davis Highway, south past the current southern boundary of the Courthouse redevelopment area, and south of Ekekeet Creek and Eskimo Hill Road. Just for, and that area of expansion is in the Red Hatch location on the map on the screen. And so just kind of for a point of reference, the northern point of this new expansion area in this location, that's approximately where the new road is being cut for the Aberley apartment project. That's in this location, right here. And so that road that's cut, that's going to be South Campus Boulevard for point of So in addition, the change would delete the requirement that property be designated as part of redevelopment area to qualify as a receiving property, and that also increase the maximum number of dwelling units the receiving area could accommodate, from 2,240 units to 3,081 future dwelling units. So just kind of to provide some background on the county's TDR program. The TDR program became effective in 2015. The TDR program can be used as a growth management tool by transferring development rights from rural areas where future growth is not encouraged. These are known as sending areas, to areas of the county where infrastructure is adequate to accommodate new growth and new growth is desired. These are known as receiving areas. It's a, this is a voluntary program where the development rights can be bought and sold, almost like real estate, between individuals or individual entities. The TDR program is different from the county's PDR program. Just to clarify, the PDR program is operated by locality, in this case Stafford County. For a PDR program, the county would acquire conservation easements voluntarily offered by property owners. The development rights then are permanently retired and not transferred to other properties, as in the case here. So the current TDR sending and receiving areas are defined in the comprehensive plan. This is the map, the figure 3.8. The map identifies a single sending area and a single receiving area currently in the county. Sending area is generally comprised of the Marlboro Point and Crowsnest Peninsulas, east of the CSX rail line. That's surrounded by blue on the map. And then the current receiving area is the location of the Courthouse redevelopment area, east of Interstate 95, highlighted in red on the map. If all properties in the sending area had the development rights transferred, it would equate to 1,490 dwelling units not being built in this area. And in the receiving area, it's been determined that that area could accommodate up to 2,240 dwelling units, based on the current zoning. For a TDR program to be legal, you have to have an adequate, the receiving area has to be able to accommodate all the potential units that could be sent from a sending area, and that's what we have now. And then, as justification of this amendment, since the program's inception, no property owner has transferred development rights, and expansion of the receiving area and increased number of eligible properties is an attempt to kind of kickstart participation in the So looking at the evaluation of this request, the expanded receiving area would increase the number of potential dwelling units in this receiving area, additional 841 units. And then there, as mentioned, there's several criteria. There are five criteria that must be met to qualify as a receiving area property, and just kind of going through those. First, criteria one requires a receiving property be one of several different zoning districts. And as depicted on the zoning map of this expanded receiving area, A1 in light green, A1 Agricultural is one of the eligible districts that would be eligible for receiving development rights in the expanded receiving area. And that does cover, that zoning district covers the majority of this receiving area The TDR program, zoning provisions allow for potential development density of up to 2.25 acres, 2.25 dwelling units per acre on A1 zone properties by right. This is consistent with the density recommendations on the future land use plan for suburban land use that is recommended in this location. For criteria two, that requires a site be located within a receiving area in the sending and receiving area map. And this action, of course, would expand the potential receiving area to include this area, to allow for this expansion. This is the third criteria, the proposed expansion area needs to meet the requirement that the receiving area has to be within the designated urban services area. The expanded receiving area is entirely within the urban services area. Criteria four stipulates that the receiving area must be part of a designated redevelopment area in the comp plan. In order to enable the proposed expansion, this provision is proposed to be removed as part of this comp plan amendment. And then criteria five requires an assessment that identifies the ability of existing and planned utility services to accepting increases in density within the designated receiving area. To evaluate this TDR expansion, the provided chart estimates the water flows, public water flows in the proposed TDR expansion area based on the planned comp plan build-out against the density permitted under the TDR alternative. And the results show that the TDR alternative would not allow for more water usage than what's already anticipated and planned for under the comprehensive plan. Sewer flows and associated improvements would correspond closely with the water flow estimates. So now, just looking at the ordinance amendment, the zoning ordinance includes the same five qualifying criteria for inclusion in receiving area. So the ordinance amendment would be consistent with the comp plan amendment being proposed. And inclusion, staff's comments on the criteria of being required to be in an RDA, inclusion in the RDA is not the most important location criteria, in staff's opinion. The focus of the RDAs is on general planning concepts and infrastructure needs, and to a lesser degree, on land use densities. And the current requirement could limit the county's ability to establish additional receiving areas due to the limited availability of suitable land for this type of program. Staff does recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment pursuant to Resolution R-1793. It does provide additional opportunities to implement the TDR growth management program, and also recommends approval of the zoning ordinance request, subject to adoption of the comprehensive plan amendments. And I'll take any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Zurev?
I just have one, if I may. I know when we were talking about the creation of this way back a decade ago, of doing TDRs, there was a great debate over whether it's a one-for-one moving, or it's one-for-two, or they get two units for everyone. This doesn't actually change that matrix. It just puts more land, which gives more availability.
Correct. Yeah, it does not change any ratios. It's all still a one-to-one transfer.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make...
Mr. Chairman, also to clarify, this does not change the number of development rights that are eligible to participate in this program. Again, as you said, it expands the area where it gives more options for where landowners could put those development rights.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, Mr. Zurev. Any other questions? Mr. English is moving.
Mike, in your opinion, do you think this is going to help boost this, do you think, the program?
It could not, yeah, because you are adding more land, and the land that is being added, it's undeveloped, it's adjacent to areas that are starting to develop, so, yeah.
So it's a big benefit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Harvey, do I understand correctly that the applicant is the county?
Mr. Chairman, yes, this was initiated at the request of the board.
I just didn't want to avoid the applicant speaking when it's actually, there's no one who can speak. All right, thank you, Mr. Zurev. All right, so now we will open up the public hearing on both items two and three. Now, the comprehensive plan for the TDRs. If you would like to speak on either of those, we ask that you come forward at this time. You have three minutes. When you start talking, please give your name and address. When you start, the green light will come on. At one minute, the yellow light comes on, and then a red light comes on when your time is up, and we ask that you wrap up your comments. All right, anyone who'd like to speak? Good evening again, Ms. Callender.
Elaine Callender, 622 Lancaster Street, Fama District. Well, this was brought to my attention this afternoon, so I hurried on over. I'm sorry, there's no one else here lined up behind me. But I think there is reason for the public to pay attention to this. Why is this being initiated by the board? Is there a specific project that's being talked about behind the scenes? How is this going to impact the residents of this part of the county? What negatives are there to this? It's all sort of a blank slate. We don't really know much detail. Why, if I understood correctly, you're going to remove the USA requirement? And that's always something you have to stop and think about. Why would we do that? So I'm wondering who benefits from this amendment, other than just perhaps opening up an additional area for the TDR program? I'd like to know why there haven't been folks interested in participating in the TDR program. There must be some specific reasons. Anyway, the public is really in the dark, and I'm just here asking questions, bringing attention to this, so that perhaps we can learn more of the details and why this is being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callender. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Zurev, do you wish to respond to answer some of the questions that Ms. Callender brought forth?
Well, I can just say that there's not been a specific project being, that's been submitted on any of the expansion area. There's a comment about moving the urban services area. That's not part of the proposal. The proposed additional receiving area is all within the existing urban services area, where growth has already been planned for higher density. And there was, you know, all I can say is why there's not been any proposals brought forth so far. I mean, it does require the purchasing of development rights between individual property owners, so that's a whole element that the county's not involved with, and we can't speak to why, you know, there could be individual property owners maybe haven't come to agreement on terms, and also the area is somewhat limited. It's not a county-wide effort as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Zurev, while we have him? All right, seeing none, okay. So we have items two and three in front of us. Is there any action?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, I would first like to make a comment, just as we've, the county has tried to do a, this program for a number of years, made an attempt at it, took an extended amount of time to even get something that the planning, through the planning commission and through the board, for the board to ultimately approve, which it would have to do on this as well. And then when it's been in place, it's not been something it's been actively participated in. However, in all that discussion, if you look back through it, there was, it was done extremely conservatively, and it was always stated, we can always expand it, we can always move forward, let's see what's right, because this is kind of a test, trying to see what might work effectively to help and promote development in the areas the county wants development, which is the whole intent behind this, and reserve other areas that we want reserved. But this county's always been a little bit conservative in our approaches, and nothing wrong with that. And we did it in a very narrow and limited fashion and manner. And now this is just a prudent step to expand it a little bit, to see what is the right level to make this an effective tool. We have very few tools in this county and in the state to be able to guide development, and this is one we're trying to make work. And so I think it's a prudent attempt to find what is the right level, what is the right balance, what is the right way to use this tool, to put development where we want development, and to limit development where we want to limit it. So it just makes sense. And with that, I'd make a motion to recommend approval of the amendment to the comprehensive plan, item number two, as presented here.
All right, and if I understand correctly, Mr. Harvey, I'm sure you'll let me know, that would be R-17-93?
Mr. Chairman, that would be correct, yes.
Okay, I thought I read Mr. Zurev's slide correctly.
Thank you, I couldn't find it, thanks.
Okay. And is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes, any further comment?
No, sir, thank you.
Ms. Vanuch?
No further comment.
All right, anyone else? All right, I'll just say that, first of all, just so people know, that the timeline for this is May 20th, which is prior to our next meeting. So on this item, there had to have been some type of action this evening. Also stating that with this element, this is, once again, this isn't approving a specific program, as in a specific transfer of a specific parcel from X to Y. This is just opening up a possibility. So, and also, I'll just say that I know that this has been supported by numerous supervisors. Ms. Bomke has spoken in favor of it. I have had conversations with my supervisor, Mr. Thomas, about this. I have heard him at board meetings express a desire that we actually widen the area that could possibly give up some of their development rights to our end of the county, and not just be that one parcel. But as Mr. Rhodes points out, this is just a trial for this program, and this isn't actually a specific deal that's coming for us. So with that, I will support it because of the idea of the concept of preserving some of our rural area. All right, with no other comments, we now take a vote. And that has passed unanimously with Ms. Bailey being absent. So it passes 6-0 with one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for item number three, proposed ordinance O-1709, to recommend, forward recommending approval.
Okay, we have a motion for O-17, is it 09 or 19?
09.
09? All right, 09. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Rhodes?
No further comments?
No further comments.
All right, anyone else on the commission? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. And that also passes with a 6-0 vote with one member absent. All right, so that takes care of items one, two, and three. We now move back to item four, the light ordinance. Ms. Blackburn, you're back up again.
Mr. Chairman, because this item was laid on the table, the commission needs to take a vote to pull it off.
To bring it back on the table.
Yes, sorry.
All right, is there a motion to bring it back on the table?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second? Is it unanimous consent to bring it back on the table? All right, by unanimous consent, it is back on the table. So now, Ms. Blackburn. I know we have a guest, but I also know that we are being so expeditious that I'm not certain...
I don't think it's...
It's not dark yet. Not to do anything.
I just...
Right.
Is it...
So is there any, I'm not sure if there's any more information that the officer can bring forward, or if we just want to go forward from there?
I suggest we just keep going forward with it.
Okay. All right, Mr. English has said that we can just move forward, but, so, okay?
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, Officer Hamilton is here to, I think, answer any questions concerning the measurement of foot candles. I know there's been a question about foot candles and lumens, and the way they are measured, and how they are dealt with out in the field. And he does have some information about that. And I know we were planning to go out in the parking lot, and I'm not sure we've had sunset yet.
No, not unless you talk exceedingly slow. All right, yes, we welcome Mr. ... Yes, we welcome Mr. Hamilton. Officer Hamilton, come on up.
Obviously, I'm not going to make you lighting experts by doing this, but I did bring this up.
Ms. Vanuch's job.
Jim.
Microphone.
From some of the classes that I've been in the past, I guess I should give you a little bit about my background, so you know that this isn't my first rodeo, so to speak. I'm in my 43rd year of law enforcement, and 25 of those years just specifically in the crime prevention-related field of SEP-TED, lighting, access control, common observation, that type of stuff. So I do my best to try to keep up with everything that's involved lighting. I don't like to call myself an expert, because all it does is get you in trouble. But at any rate, there's technologies that are involved in lighting systems that are continually changing as well. So I wanted to address that issue also, because there's terms that a lot of people don't understand, and I was hoping that if we were able to go out, so you could get some idea what one foot candle actually is, and I think that was a controversy. But this document right here, actually, if I can get somebody to pass them out, pretty much explains what one foot candle is. It also goes over typical foot candles in different areas and whatever on the first page, energy facts about how it uses electricity based on the technology. And on the second page, it goes into color temperature. And that's where the technologies come into play, because you have incandescent, you have fluorescent, you have high-pressure sodium, low-pressure sodium, metal halide, and now the new LEDs. Well, essentially, what they're saying, and if you read it, is that that is what the temperature of the light is considered, is the brightness of that light. And if I can address your attention to the very last sentence on the right side on the back of that page, this is a GE document, where it says, "All present daylight sources will be replaced with LEDs." So essentially, what that's saying is that once all those fixtures get changed over and whatever, all of these measurements and whatever are going to have to be taken back into consideration, because since the temperature of that type of lighting is higher, we might be able to back off on some of the recommendations based on that technology, if that makes any sense. But that's essentially what we're talking about. But as far as measurements go, as far as the ordinance goes, this is pretty much, and I'll give that to you also, sir, is the point of what we would measure when it comes to residential lighting at a borderline. And just to give you a little bit of background on the ordinance, this ordinance had been initiated probably, gosh, I'm going to say, eight or nine years ago, and it was a long, almost a seven-year process to get this. The Planning Commission and the planners asked me for input from my experience. And as a result of that, this is another thing that we came up with when they were trying to adopt the ordinance, as far as what type of lighting standards, based on what type of use, would be in the realm of what we consider a safe environment, comfortable environment, for people to live, work, and play in. But I'll also let you have this one, too. So if you go through that, it might give you some idea of what the lighting actually is, but I tried to do my best to touch on those things that have an effect on actual the lighting. But one of the things that we were focused on is the type of fixtures, be what we call cutoff fixtures. And what that means is that the light is actually up inside the fixture. So instead of like the globe, the bulb, where it just lights out everywhere, up sideways and down, we want it to be cut off. So once it was up inside, you had a triangle of light that comes down. So it doesn't go out, and it doesn't go up. It goes down to where it needs to be focused. The benefit of the LEDs is they're made up of diodes. If you ever look at them, they're about maybe the size of my finger. And they can actually put prisms on those diodes, where they can actually aim where the light needs to be, so they can get it where it needs to be. So in essence, you can have a property line. The pole can be there, and with a mere amount of feet, you can be down to zero on one side, and the lighting goes to the other side, because we focus the lighting on parking and pedestrian areas for the safety and the comfort aspect. So if that makes sense. But essentially, the one foot candle, and that's what I was always trained in, measuring in the foot candle. There are lumens, and it explains lumens in there as well. But on the first page, if you take a candle and you put it a foot away from a piece of paper, that round circle of lighting that it puts on that paper in the middle of it, that's one foot candle. So it's not obtrusive light being one foot candle. So any questions? Did that maybe help a little?
Okay. Thank you, Officer Hamilton. Any questions? Ms. Vanuch?
I have a quick question. How often does the sheriff's office get calls from concerned constituents in Stafford regarding neighbors or other people shining lights into their homes, and they want you to come out and do a measurement to determine if it's within the ordinance?
Actually, I've been here 13 years, and this is the first one. Now, on the other hand, the lack of lighting, I can't even count how many times I've been called out by neighborhoods, homeowner associations, management companies, because of the lack of lighting. And that was one of the reasons where, with my previous experience in another jurisdiction doing the same thing, those were primarily the issues that I was called to go try to take care of. So once I came here, I wanted the lighting ordinance to cover those things, so we didn't have those issues, and that those spaces were comfortable as they're built, as opposed to after the developer builds it and goes without putting it in. Then the management company or the homeowner associations are responsible for putting in that lighting, which is much more expensive to do after the fact than doing it while it's built. So that's why I sit on the Planning Commission when they have their meetings on the new developments, so at least I can give them some idea of what type of lighting I feel is adequate for that. And so far, we've been pretty successful. I'm sure if you drive around to some of those new spaces and you see some of the new LED lighting, it's great. And what we're trying to do is get a consistent lighting, so you don't have that roller coaster of the bright and the dark, and the bright and the dark. So what I'm looking to go and try to accomplish is get more poles shorter, so you have that consistent lighting pattern, instead of real tall poles, real bright in the middle, dark, then bright again. I want it consistent. So as you age, your eyes don't so great, and you don't have that trying to readjust as you walk. And they're going to the town center design, where a lot of people are going to be pedestrians or whatever, so that's kind of what we're looking at.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. English.
I guess this is going to be to Ms. Blackburn. Ms. Blackburn, a quick couple of questions for you. How long have you been, how long have you been with the Planning Commission? I mean, how long you been in your job?
Here at the county?
Yeah.
Five years.
And how long have you, have you done this lighting before?
I have done some lighting before. In reviewing plans, I was able to understand reading photometric plans and things like that, but this has been a very good learning experience.
So as you're, and my next question, I guess, since you've been in there, have you, you have nobody's complained about this at all that you know?
We have had, I think, just a few.
About the?
And it has been, it has been with residential. And we have been, we've gone out and investigated it, of course, and have been able to come to some agreements in compliance, yes.
And the other question I have for you, if this LED, like Officer Hamilton said, is going to be the new, that's the new craze or whatever, so you're looking at probably changing the whole ordinance again, but within the next year and a half, correct?
I don't know what the timeframe is.
It's hard to say, because as we go, the technology's getting so good, we're even dealing with different color renderings of the new LEDs.
But in, I have gone to a couple seminars, and that has always been, as Officer Hamilton has said, the technology is changing so fast that it will just depend on how quickly the industry can get that technology to particularly the homeowners. And I'm sure, as you've seen, in Lowe's and in Home Depot, LED lights for home use are much cheaper than they were even a year and a half ago.
But even then, it's retrofitting out. I know we're slowly, we'll be doing it over 10 years during our parking lots up north, just because, just the cost and the time process. I think we'll probably, ordinance-wise, be going through some point in time where we almost have a parallel, where I'll put some in for both, so we can address both, and then it'll be a while till you get them all over there.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Anything else, Mr. English?
And Mr. Hamilton, we went from 15 minutes to seven minutes. Can you explain why we went from 15 minutes to seven minutes on leaving the lights on? Is it?
Well, if you can get, move over to the microphone. Thank you. You're talking about the amount of time a central light would stay on in a residential area. We just felt that 15 minutes was excessive. Seven minutes should be more than enough time for you to be able to drive into wherever you're driving, the lights go on, you're able to see if there's anybody there or any issues. You get out, you unload your vehicle, you go in, hopefully it goes out, you don't need it any longer, unless something else moves into it to turn it back on. So we just felt 15 minutes was excessive. So we always get issues like that, and we try to do what we can to compromise, as long as it doesn't, I guess, cause issues for that safety concern that we might have. And that's all based on the use and the specific problem at the time.
Would it be feasible to, for the businesses maybe to have it at seven minutes instead of a residential?
Say that again?
And it would be, would this fit better for a business instead of a residential? In other words, we recommend a residential could leave it on for seven minutes instead of, and maybe just not put a time limit on a residence, or should it fix for businesses should be for seven minutes? Or is that, should just be standard across? Do you follow what I'm trying to say? Well, if a business has their --
Well, the business environment, their usage hours might be different, which might have an effect on how long it stays on based on the time.
Okay. That's, okay, that's my, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rhodes.
For Officer Hamilton or Ms. Blackburn, yeah, I don't know which best, but there was the comment, I was struck by the comment of, in Mr. Dayton's letter, or referred to Mr. Dayton's letter, about one-half lumen being the standard. And then the comparison, basically, a lumen is one-tenth of a foot candle. I know where I work, we use foot candle, one foot candle out in the parking lots and other things, and I couldn't imagine anything being effective whatsoever at one-twentieth of that level. So it was surprising to me to see a reference to one-half lumen as a standard. Can anybody comment to that?
I don't measure lumens. I'm measuring the foot candles. And if you look at that diagram up at the top left of the first page where it shows the candle, if you move that candle another foot away, it would go from one foot candle to .5, which is half. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, the farther away you get, the lower the casted light would be on that.
I was just trying to understand this reference in the memo, the February 9/15 memo from Mr. Dayton, that says, "As for excessive illumination, the zoning administrator has set this at .5 lumens as being excessive illumination." And when you, depending on what conversion, there's a couple of different conversions, both at the SI and then at another level, one is a more one-to-one with foot candle, the other is about one to 10, or 10 to one with foot candle. So I'm just trying to, trying to understand what this is, if anybody knows what this is referencing?
No. All right. Any other questions?
The diagram that I sent around that actually shows the measurement point for residential area, that would be where, whatever the minimum standard, that's where that measurement would be taken, and it shouldn't exceed anything beyond that on the other side of the property Regardless of what the standard is, the standard would be right there where that measurement point would be.
Okay.
Can you just state for the record before you leave, what the current ordinance is for the property line light? What is the foot candle for the borderline property line?
It's my understanding that it started out at .1.
At one.
Point one?
I'm sorry.
Regular one.
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 And .5 is half of that. So one foot candle, so .5 would be half of the foot candle.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Harvey.
Again, this amendment was trying to get at the point that Mr. Gavin raised earlier, and my discussions with him is that the current ordinance talks about lights should not be directed to adjacent residences, but that doesn't give you an objective measure. This proposed ordinance is an attempt to give an objective measure by giving a light level that can be checked out with a luxometer.
Thank you, sir.
And the ordinance is set on foot candle?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. I just perceive that this is an error in Mr. Dayton's saying, but we'll be able to address that a little bit later as we go outside. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Hamilton? Thank you, Officer Hamilton. Anything else, Ms. Blackburn? All right. So this comes back to us. Is there any feeling from the commission on this issue?
Do we want to move on to five, since we're going to do our little field trip?
Well, I don't, I still don't think it's dark enough.
I know. So do we want to move on to item number five, and then come back to this again?
If that is the will of the commission, we can go with that. Okay?
Do I get a chance to speak at all?
No, that was at the beginning of the public hearing. At the public hearing, you did, right. At the beginning of the public hearing.
If I do, not that I did, do I get a chance to speak again?
No, sir. That's how this public hearing works. All right. Is there a feel for the commission that we move on to five and table this again?
That's fine.
All right. So is there unanimous consent to table this once again?
Mr. Chairman, you still need a motion and a second.
Right. So Mr. Rhodes, make the motion.
Second.
Battle between Boswell and Vanuch for the second. And so, we have unanimous consent to table this again, so now we move to item five.
Mr. Chairman, please recognize Mr. Zaraf for the presentation regarding the Stafford Nursing Home and Retirement Community proffer amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Zaraf. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. If I could have the computer, please. So this is a request to amend proffer conditions to increase the number of assisted living dwelling unit types permitted on the Stafford Nursing Home and Retirement Community property, and allowing for flexibility between the independent living units and assisted living units. On April 12, the public hearing was conducted, and the applicant deferred to this date to address concerns raised at that meeting. Going through the issues that were raised, Commissioner English questioned if the current gated access off of Brandywine Court could be permanently open to traffic to reduce vehicle trips onto Berea Church Road. The location of the gate is identified within the red circle on the image that you see, and to the south is Brandywine Court. Regarding this issue, staff has a few, provided a few comments on that suggestion. Proffer 31 in the current proffers requires the current access restriction. The emergency access gate was required to be in place prior to any occupancy permit in Phase 2 of the project, where the crossings facility is located. An amendment to proffer 31 would be required to remove that gate, that emergency access restriction. Also, during the initial rezoning request, staff did comment on the issue of access through to Brandywine Court. Staff did express concern about the connection, adding more traffic onto Berea Church Road in its unapproved state. And proffers did require onsite frontage improvements along Berea Church Road and off-site improvements at the Berea Church Road-Fleet Road 17 intersection to improve the conditions of Berea Church Road, and at the same time, place the access restriction through to Brandywine Court. Staff had commented, from a planning best practices perspective, the mixing of the industrial use and industrial traffic with retirement community traffic may be undesirable. In addition, the applicant may have concerns about the industrial traffic passing through their project. Staff had observed, has observed, the gate being open during the daytime for random, at random times, but is uncertain of the schedule for the opening and closing of that gate. Also, in the image, the road configuration highlighted with the blue line makes for an inconvenience. an inconvenient cut-through route between Brandywine Court and Burnley Drive as a travel way, travel ways and a circuitous route around the nursing home building and under its portico. Next issue, there was concern raised with flexibility in the unit types and resultant loss in future cash contributions that might result. Proffer, the last version of the proffers did allow the, an immediate reduction of independent living units from forty-six down to thirty, with no requirement for any future independent living units. So potentially, no more cash proffers would, would be required to be paid by the applicant in the prior version. So, at the meeting and subsequent, proffer five was amended by the applicant to require there be a total of one hundred independent living units identified and resulting from the build-out of Phase Two, basically the remainder of the project with no less than thirty independently living units at any one time. So this would basically require on, at the time when they come in for a site plan, anywhere from fifty-four to seventy new independent living units to be constructed as part of that last section of development. And along with that, there'd be the collection of cash proffers at that time, and then, after that point, they could shift units back and forth between assisted and independent living units after the additional cash proffers were collected. So, staff did prepare a cash proffer analysis, what has been originally paid, the remaining value and potential total contributions resulting with, from the latest change. The original total proffer amount amounted to $1.6 million. Looking at the current contributions, with the forty-six independent living units, the applicant has paid cash contributions of approximately $367,000. Also, the proffers required, as part of those proffers, in-kind transportation improvements. This involved the, the transportation improvements at the Fleet Road 17 intersection with Berea Church Road, that those improvements had a value of $582,000, and had been completed, they were completed back when the crossings was, was constructed. And so, your current total contributions amount to $949,000 with the cashed-in-kind transportation improvements. And the potential future contributions with, if, you know, I'd mentioned, anywhere from fifty-four to seventy independent living units, that would occur in that last site plan. If there were fifty-four future independent living units, that would amount to an additional cash contribution of $431,000, for a total of $1.3 million in, in contributions. Or if there is a need for seventy additional independent living units, that would amount to $559,000, or $1.5 million in contributions in total in the future. Staff is supportive of the proffer amendment pursuant to ordinance seventeen dash twenty-one. The amendment does resolve concerns about the proffer tracking with the payment that would be required upon completion of the last phase of the project. We would, the county would be able to collect that cash contribution all at once prior to the occupancy of that building. And the additional contributions with the latest amendment of up to 1.3 to 1.5 million does resolve concerns staff expressed about potential unmitigated impacts on public safety and transportation, and I'll take any questions. All right. Any questions for Mr. Zaraf? Seeing none, okay, thank you, then the applicant can come forward.
Mr. Chairman, and other members of the Planning Commission, my name is Charlie Payne, the law firm Herschel Fleischer, we represent the applicant. Appreciate your time this evening, hope you're all doing well. Appreciate the time getting this meeting going, because the caps are on, so want to make sure, try to make game seven here in a few minutes, I'm not sure what the score is. But, but anyway, I think staff has covered the issues that were raised by the Planning Commission in regards to confirming our proffers. As we stated at the last meeting, we were willing to do at least a hundred minimum independent living units, and no less than thirty at any one time. So the plan currently is to back the current forty-six independent living units to thirty, to get sixteen extra assisted living units in the first, in the first building of Phase Two, which is the second of the three buildings to be constructed at the site. And again, that is not a, that's just a minimum, we could go up higher than a hundred units if, if, if the market was directing it that way. I'd just also add, in addition to the proffers that Mr. Zaraf just discussed, that we have already contributed or paid, there's also $75,000 in recreational proffers that we've already paid as well, that were required through the first building of Phase Two. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I appreciate your time this evening.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Payne? I do have one, I just, one of the things that I raised last time was, this came before us a couple of years ago where it got moved, and now we're here again. So is it the forethought in this planning that this is a long-term solution to this? Granted, I understand markets change, but I'm happy to see a head nodding, but I just want to make sure we're not going to see this back in a couple of years from now.
Certainly not, certainly not, certainly not our expectation. The markets have changed, I mean, we're responding to what the community needs are. Assisted living is a great need in Stafford County and in this region, and this is a way to keep families here in place in Stafford County. You know, quite honestly, the independent living units are much more profitable for the development, for, for the client. Assisted living is much more regulated, there's a lot more cost to it, got to have a lot more 24/7 personnel, so, you know, if the incentive is there, obviously from a market perspective, to add more independent living is a combination of this, of this development, sure. But right now, the assisted living component is driving the market.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will turn the gavel back over to Ms. Vanuch.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Since this is in your George Washington election district, what do you desire?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to approve 017-21.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. English. I have a motion by Mr. Cohen, a second by Mr. English. Mr. Cohen, any further comments?
Just a couple. I think the applicant has made some movements on the different issues that we raised. I understand and can respect the concerns about this isolating seniors as was raised earlier, but this complex has already been approved, so this is just, it's already going to be there, so it's just a question of what's going to be there. I was supportive of the, this one that came a couple of years ago, because I understand the, the need for flexibility because of the aging population. I do appreciate that they, they have put in there a certain set number, the hundred, and, and the head nodding, that the idea is this is a long-term solution, that this won't be continually coming back to us. So with that in mind, I'm going to move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. English, any further comments?
No.
No? Any other comments from the only two remaining Planning Commissioners up here? No? Okay, so with that, seeing no further comments, we shall take a vote on the reclassification Okay, so the motion passes 5-0, with Ms. Bailey being absent and Mr. Rhodes recusing himself.
Thank you very much. All right. And just as, since we have a moment, before we get into anything else, I do want to publicly thank Ms. Callender for her suggestion of putting information out there for, on the public hearing, so that the public can have that information. And you weren't here last meeting when we started it, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge that that was your brainchild, and staff has been wonderful in making that happen. So, we now have one item still on the table.
Mr. Chairman, we might, we've got a few other items on the agenda with the Planning Director's Report, et cetera, we could go through those, just give us a few more minutes of time till it gets darker, and then circle back.
Okay, to do that, I'm informed by Ms. McLennan that we would have to take a motion to alter the agenda, so that we could take it up after these other items. Am I correct in what you said?
You're correct, I actually misstated, I'm sorry. You need to waive the bylaws such that you could take up this, that unfinished business item after, but you can do that at that point, the motion, or excuse me, the item remains on the table until you decide to take it up, and it should be a supermajority voted at that time.
Okay, so we go through all the other items, and then we ask to waive the bylaws so that we can take it off the table. Thank you, Ms. McLennan. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. So we will press forward with all possible dispatch. Mr. Harvey, your Director's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let the Commission know, we're having a little personnel change in the office. William Sugg, who is a planner in our department, has been with us for three years, you probably remember him from a couple of presentations he made last year with waiver requests. He is moving on to Fairfax County, he's taken a promotion to become a transportation planner there, so we wish him well. We're in the recruitment process right now, so hopefully we'll have his position filled shortly and be able to continue to provide you with the direct staffing at the Planning Commission meetings for development review issues. Also, wanted to make the Commission aware of an initiative that the Planning and Zoning Department, as well as the Public Works Department's been working on for a number of months now. We're endeavoring and going to have an, an option for electronic permit and plan review process, where someone can, at home, submit their permit application, or at their place of employment, submit their permit application to the county electronically, so they wouldn't necessarily have to have a runner come into the office and drop off large rolls of plans. It should save a lot of time, effort, and energy from the development community and homeowners' perspective, because they will not have to make extensive copies of plans or provide a computer disk to the county. Then they would, could be able to do this all from the convenience of their place of business or their home, and not have to physically drive to the government center and stand in line and to have their applications submitted. So we're hoping to roll out that process this summer. It requires a coordination and extensive effort with our IT department and a vendor to marry up this software program that will allow us to do the plan review. It'll be, it'll be a really interesting thing to see, because it allows you to take a look at marked-up comments from the county staff, and then when the applicant res submits the plan, the plan gets overlaid on top of those marked-up comments, so we can see if those issues have been directly resolved. Also allows the, us to review plans from the first submission and the second submission, to see what other changes may have occurred that weren't commented on the first time. So if the design engineer makes modifications, they'll be more readily available and aware to us. So we've been moving forward on that endeavor. We feel like with this software, we'll probably be the first one in the Commonwealth to implement it, but we're hoping it'll be found to be very convenient and worthwhile for the development community, as well as the county. Like anything, when you deploy new software, there's some wrinkles, and we're going to try to work through all that, but our goal is to start deployment in the summer. Permitting would start first, and then development review applications through planning and zoning would come later. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Ms. McLennan, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Are you sure? All right. So now we move to committee reports, the Sign Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're scheduled to meet on May 18th at 1:00 in the Administrative Conference Room. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, sir. Is, I believe, there has been a tentative date for the Parking and Drive Aisle Standards Committee set?
Yes, Mr. Rhodes and I talked before the meeting, we're tentatively scheduled for June 1st at 4:00 PM. We should have a confirmed date by the end of the week.
All right. And then the Landscaping Standards Committee, Mr. English and I have talked with staff about meeting at 4:30 prior to our meeting on 5/24. So we have dates set up. Chairman's Report, I have nothing to report, as much as we want me to talk. And so, other business, we have the TRC information that has been provided to the appropriate people.
And to confirm, that'll start at 9:00? Is that, again, session nine and 10 for those two?
That's what's contemplated, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We do have approval of minutes, contrary to our agenda, as a last item on the agenda, that last-minute change. We had the minutes prepared by Ms. Tenet from our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors last week, our dinner meeting, so is there a...
Take a motion for approval to join session minutes?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rhodes, you must be tired. I got through the whole sentence. We have a motion by Mr. Rhodes, second by Ms. Vanuch, for approval of the minutes. Mr. Rhodes, any comment?
No, sir.
Ms. Vanuch?
Nope.
Anyone else? All right. Vote for approval of the minutes of our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors last week. And that has passed unanimously, with Ms. Bailey not present and not able to vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Not, not purposely to drag this out, but if I could beg the indulgence of the fellow Commissioners for just a moment, I would like to highlight and reinforce that since 1984, the first week, first full week of May of each year has been Public Service Recognition Week. It is an opportunity to recognize public servants at the federal, state, and local levels for their contributions and their service, and so, and consistent with that, I certainly want to thank the staff, who, tremendous professional staff, that serves many clients from many perspectives, and does just a tremendous job, in my opinion. So I want to thank them for their service, and certainly thank the fellow Commissioners for your commitment to supporting the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, and that's a wonderful assignment, thank you. All right, we have one item that's sort of out on the table, is there a motion?
Push away the bylaws and bring it back.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there unanimous consent, which we've met past our supermajority that is required? And seeing no no's, that we have. So now we're back to item number four, which was the lighting ordinance. Is there any will or desire by the Commission on this item?
Do we want to go outside and see how dark it is?
It's not very dark.
Oh, he was wondering if we are going to go outside. Ms. Vanuch is checking the lights, and it's still light out, so I don't think it'll be...
I said, does any, it's dark enough yet.
Okay. No, no, it's, again, you comment during the comment time. All right, so since it's not dark enough at this point, and our next meeting, this is, has to be dealt with by June 1st, so it would have to be done by our next meeting, which would be even more light later in the day. Is there any desire?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this ordinance that was brought in form of us.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. English.
No, I think that Mr. Hamilton and Ms. Blackburn's worked hard on this, and I think they've come up with good solutions, and I think this is a, this would work, and like I said, this thing's going to probably change within a year, year and a half anyway, with the LED lighting. So that's why I want to go ahead and approve this and get it through.
Mr. Chairman, in, comment, I did want to ask staff, just for one point of confirmation from Mr. Harvey, have we had any, any of our ordinances set at a, at a .5 lumen structure in this regard on measuring light issues?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rhodes, Ms. Blackburn's indicating we currently do not in our ordinance.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, my reason for just asking that, because that just stood out to me there in that memo, I believe, I believe that there was incorrect terminology that was used in that memorandum by Mr. Dayton, in just an honest error, but it just perceives that to me, and that certainly, understandably, was an issue for Mr., for the, for the Speaker this evening, as they talked about that, because that would be a twenty-fold increase, but I don't believe that that was the measurement. I don't think anything, lumen and lux are used in very different ways, for very different purposes and terms. When it's compared to foot candle, it is a ten-to-one ratio, and I understand that. I was asking my own staff on a different issue, for things we do up there, but there's no real way to make that work for the purposes of this light issue. I, I mean, I feel very comfortable with the .5 foot candle personally, as that structure. Now, it's the bleed over, and it's the other issue, and there's certainly been other things raised, but from that measurement perspective, personally, I'm comfortable with it, that's why I seconded the motion.
Okay. Any other comment by any other member? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval of the 017-13, I believe it is.
Which is to recommend it forward to the Board, which will have another public...
That's right. The Board of Supervisors will have a say. All right. And, I believe we voted yes. All right, and that has passed 6-0, with Ms. Bailey being absent. All right, with that being done, we are done with our... With that being done, we are done with our... All our items on the agenda, and so, this meeting is adjourned at 8:00.